All right, 5 o'clock. We will call this special meeting to order. Again, this is a special meeting tonight for the sole purpose of having a conversation with Trainer Architects, who has a representative here, to discuss the possibility of Trainer helping us with our facilitation of our City Hall committee. So would you join us at the microphone and introduce yourself?
Andy, commissioners. Andy Pitts with Trainer H L Architects. We've had, been here a couple of times to discuss a little bit about what we do and then have some also meetings with staff to kind of talk about a scope and has presented a couple of different scope ideas for the commission to review and then discuss. I can walk through each of those kind of generically if that would help. It's kind of an overview or begin with questions.
No, I'd love to have that because I don't know what's been discussed with city staff.
Sure. So there was three, basically three different outlines of scopes that have been discussed. The first one was the one that we presented prior to really the interviews with the commission, the beginning of this process. What that did is it really looked at a streamlined approach of looking at the work that has been done to date by a different architect, taking that information, reviewing it, meeting it with some of the key stakeholders to not going to understand what the program, how the program was developed, what really some of the key needs are, meeting also with commissioners individually if necessary to kind of discuss about some of the goals and visions of the project also. And then ultimately having a meeting also with the public to kind of hear some of the goals and visions and feedback on looking at the temporary City Hall building, the 1916 City Hall building, and kind of weighing those options and ultimately coming back to the commission and giving our reaction to what's been presented to date, what we see as kind of a norm of a similar type of project and what some ideas of moving forward would be. So it's kind of a really quick snapshot of looking at the two buildings, kind of understanding and then giving you kind of a report back on that. After that, we discussed a little bit during the interview process, a little bit of expanding that, and then also had some discussion with staff. And so the second proposal that we presented was a much more detailed scope. There was three different phases associated with it. The first phase was looking at the two different buildings in a much more detail. So it's taking the 1916 City Hall building, looking at some of the building envelope issues that are being, happened with the roof and the exterior walls and the weather infiltration and the water infiltration there, some of the impacts that's caused with inside the building, some of the potential renovation, I would say, opportunities or limitations that go with that building, how the historic environs plays into that, and be able to kind of understand what are some of the things that we would need to do from an ADA, life safety code, just to bring the building to more of an occupiable state today, regardless of what goes in it, but what do we need to do to that building? At the same time, looking at the temporary City Hall building and what some of the things are from the mechanical electrical plumbing systems, how do we take those, make those more efficiently, being able to look again at some of the life safety things, how do we take a hospital and turn it into an office environment? And then again, what are some of the opportunities and limitations with that building moving forward? A next piece of it was kind of looking at the programming and ultimately some complementary design work. So we're meeting with the stakeholders, understanding the program, taking that program and then updating that based upon some of what we see are trends within those types of buildings and also what we're hearing from the stakeholders, being able to then test fit those concepts into each of those buildings, what seems to make sense. And so then people have an opportunity to look at that and be able to respond to what some of the options would be. Meet with the stakeholders and then also at the same time having concurrently a public engagement facility where we either work with a group of stakeholders that's assigned by the commission and also public forums along the way. So there's a variety of steps where we kind of took some information, brought it in front of all those groups, talked about it, took that back, be able to work up some more ideas and kind of respond to that, and again, work that through to ultimately come up with a recommendation to the city commission from the stakeholders and the public of a potential project moving forward. The third piece of that is adding in the other piece of scope of other city projects within the community. How does this specific project rank amongst other projects that are potentially needs within the community? How do those things rank from a priority? How do they work from an impact on the cost and revenue? And be able to add those parts and pieces into the discussion at the same time when we're talking with the stakeholders and also with the public. So those are kind of the three things that we've outlined for staff and then provided a proposal in a dollar amount associated with that. The dollars, of course, it just basically, it's the time it takes to work through each of those different steps and kind of what we've made some assumptions is moving forward.
Right.
That's really a quick overview of what those three are, and I'm happy to answer questions or dive into any of this more specifically.
Andy, we do have a huge following on cable. They'll all be hanging on every word you say when we start running this on cable. So would you tell us the prices again, just so we have that on the...
Sure. The original scope of services, I'll make sure I get this right, was $6,750. The second scope of services was $60,000. The third scope was basically an add of about $1,200, so $61,200 to do that piece of work.
Okay, great. Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
I mentioned as I introduced myself to you again that even the three of us can't really agree on what we want, so I don't know how we'll ever get this resolved. When we voted whether to even have this committee, it was kind of a two to one vote. Two of us think it's probably a good idea and one's not so sure. And then if we're going to have the committee, it's very difficult for us to say, well, how much, you know, how much of a look do we want to give to this? Because we're already in the hospital building. We know it's big enough. It's big enough by a factor of, I don't know, 300% maybe. And right now, it looks like they're pretty comfortable over there because it's better than what we had, but it's not, clearly not ideal. So the idea of getting the committee together, from my perspective, was to get a reading of the public. Are they willing to pony up several million dollars, many millions of dollars, to build a new fire EMS station and remodel the old City Hall? So my goal was to get somebody in impartial and get a read on what our public thinks, you know, pick a committee, let them see both buildings and, you know, go from there. Because I hate to invest $60,000 myself if we're just going to say, well, let's remain where we are right now, which is in the hospital building. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
Yeah. So I don't know where you gentlemen are standing on this. Either of you want to join in, jump in, share your thoughts?
Well, I see that whatever we do, we need to know what our needs are. You mentioned the architectural program was later in the game. I think when you're evaluating either building, you have to know what you need too. So I think the architectural program to determine size requirements is something that is kind of leading the investigation. We also, like you need to know, we have to know what the existing City Hall, the original 1916 building, where the problems are and what it's going to cost to remediate those. And that's worn out windows, roof membrane, life safety issues and that. And then also looking at Building D where we are now, the important part too is the operating cost, how that's going to impact. You know, like Mayor said, we've got plenty of space. We've got more space than what the original facility had, but how does that impact the budget in coming years? And looking at, and then not just the two options, but we had talked earlier, the possibility of new fire EMS facility versus remodeling part of either or building or a remote location of the tenants. But you know, what are all the options I think we have instead of saying, here we are, let's stay, but what's that going to affect us long term? We operate on ad valorem property tax, so whatever we decide is going to have an impact. If we remodel the 1916, that's going to impact taxes. If we stay where we are, that's going to impact. If we build new facilities, that's going to impact. What is the best use of our dollar because we still have other things that need to be addressed? We need roads, that's ongoing maintenance, infrastructure. So, you know, it's, we've got to look at the long picture of if it takes us $20 and we could do it with 10, then that gives us, you know, $10 that we could use for road repair. So, you know, I see what we need is, how much space do we need to operate in the various departments, what the condition is, identifying the problems with each building and what the long-term effect is. We can't take anything to the public unless we have information to give them, and so far, we haven't got reliable information to share with ourselves, let alone with the public.
I see this as an opportunity to actually do a strategic plan that helps move us forward because as Leonard had mentioned, you know, we have other infrastructure requirements. We have $3 million water plant, we've got streets, we've got sewers, all that stuff Leonard mentioned. Along with the City Hall issue and while it's important, I think it's a bigger picture in fact, that how do we put all this together so that we come up with a financing plan from the community that says, this is what's good, this is what we're willing to support, this is what we can put into place. And actually, in some ways, by doing it this way, we set a roadmap for whoever becomes commissioners after the next election. Because then we actually establish what the plan is, it's prioritized, you know, we'll end up actually making the final decision, but that's why you want input from the community as a whole, from the stakeholders, as you say, and then from the community as a whole. And then, because who knows how we finance it? You know, I mean, we probably have, I think I heard one time, that we probably have 11, 12 million dollars, maybe more, worth the infrastructure needs. All right. So then what is a three-year plan? What's a one-year plan? What's a three-year plan? What's a five-year plan? What's a 10-year plan? How do we make it all work? And then, you know, it's actually an execution issue. So that's where I'm coming from with it. I agree with Gary in that the City Hall, you know, is an issue, but it's an issue that's in the big picture of the entire community. And have to make that decision here pretty quick, I would assume, but, so that's where I'm coming from. And that'd be, basically that'd be what I would support. So that means we'll spend more money, but I think it's more money that, and actually that's what Leonard was suggesting, that we do a more comprehensive plans, the way I understood from what you were saying. So...
I'm used to being the odd man out, that's okay.
That's fine. But, I mean, I mean, that's, we don't have these opportunities very often, and we may as well take advantage of it. And we actually have a strategic plan, but already, but it's not detailed enough probably, probably not prioritized enough. Community can help us make all that happen. I trust them. You know, it's worked before, it'll work in the past. You know, we had a committee that was appointed that did the downtown streetscape with the trees and all that kind of stuff. We met, 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 and everybody agreed to it, and the downtown streetscape with the trees and stuff is very nice. Happened with the school district. So this committee has an effort, has a history of being able to come together and make these kind of decisions, and of course, that's, that's what we're elected to do.
When we heard your original presentation, I was impressed. It sounded like this is what you do. I mean, you do an awful lot of work with cities.
Yes, sir.
Like almost exclusively, from what I remember.
The team that I, that I'm involved with is what we call our justice team, but all we do is work for municipalities.
Your justice team?
Yeah, so we work with, it's basically civic organization. So we work with either municipalities, cities, counties, states.
Okay.
Across the US from, and every project is public project, most of them are publicly funded, most of them have a referendum, so it's a typical process that we do.
So you've done this countless times?
Yes, sir.
Almost exactly this?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever had an old...
It's never easy.
No, I'm sure. Have you ever had a city...
Well, they're difficult, they're difficult decisions.
They are.
Because they're difficult issues.
Yes.
But, I mean, the issues don't go away.
Sure.
Regardless of what we decide, those issues are still going to remain there.
Right.
So I don't, and the longer we delay, the more it's going to cost us.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's just a fact. The longer we delay, the longer, or the more it's going to cost us, and actually, the further it puts us behind. And so I'm kind of excited about the opportunity, if it happens.
So both of you gentlemen, I think, are leaning toward option three. Is that a fair statement? The most comprehensive study that they're proposing?
Was there a written option two?
Yes, sir. That was the second, that was the second piece that we submitted over to the city that outlines basically the, we look at the two existing buildings, the program and review, begin to test fit it, and then also then coming up with concepts to be able to present that to the stakeholders and also within a public forum. And then option three begins to then add in more of a comprehensive look of all the city projects that are potential and be able to put those as input and priorities.
Which one was dated November 4th?
That was the option number two.
Okay.
That's $60,000.
Yes, sir.
So any questions about that one in particular? Exactly what's included or...
The last page on that kind of outlines a kind of a diagram, a flow chart of how we would work through the process. And it was basically outlining three public forums within the community as a whole and then a variety of stakeholder meetings also throughout that process. Some of those would be jointly, some of those would be individually. We would want to do tours of the buildings with the community and really get everybody understanding what are the problems? You know, here are some of the potential solutions, and then understand from that the priorities moving forward and then some recommendations for the commission.
Would it also include some potential financing options?
Yes.
Such as maybe grants, bonds, whatever?
We would work with staff to say, okay, here's what, within the existing bonding capacity, here are the potentials that you have within the city, have those brought into the public forum and just hear feedback on, will you support a sales tax? Will you support this type of referendum? And if it went for these types of projects?
So it'd be...
We try to make it as comprehensive as possible, and we won't have every answer, but we'll have to make some assumptions along the way, just as moving forward, but at least we'll give the public the ideas that are out there and some of the potential solutions and then how we would have to pay for them.
In a typical situation like this, do you have a set committee? Because we talked about appointing a committee, or do you just welcome anybody in the public to participate that wants to, to...
I would suggest two different components within what I'm calling the kind of the public engagement. I would set a set stakeholders committee, a group of 12 to 15 individuals that represent a wide variety of the community that really are the ones that are the spearheading and really work this thing top to bottom.
Right.
At the same time, we would hold entire town hall, town forums, for everybody within the community to come.
Perfect.
And so that would be opened up to the community as a whole, be able to come, they could come to one, they could come to all of them, be able to hear what some of the ideas are and then be able to offer their feedback.
What's a typical composition of the stakeholders committee, which is the smaller 12 to 15?
Who makes up that group?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I would say it's naysayers, it's people for and against, it's young, old, it's people that are new to the community, old, you know, been here for a long time, understand the issues. I mean, the more diverse the group is, the better, the harder their work and the better response that the commission will get from that group. And then the more the public believes the group, if it really has a diverse background.
How long do you envision this process taking?
I anticipate about three months through the process, just the beginning, kind of getting everything on board, reviewing it, and then setting some of those public forums probably every couple of weeks. And then so over that three-month period, we'd have a variety of meetings set up and then advertise those public forums and so the public could come.
Intense process.
I mean, it could...
Once you start, it's going to be...
You'd want to keep it moving because you want to keep, if you drag this on too long, you almost kind of lose some of the momentum and you also then...
We're there.
Yeah, you lose the continuity of the group that's been involved in that, and you want to keep that continuity there.
Something he just mentioned that would benefit us is the fact that it's not going to be too long and we're going to be in a budget process again. And that would help us make some budget decisions in terms of, don't say that.
Just ruin Jen's day.
But, I mean, I, I mean, I just sat here and thought of that. I thought, wow, that'd be good timing.
Yeah.
Because we start that process late spring. That would help us start following the roadmap, so to speak.
Yes, sir.
So would you talk about more of a comprehensive approach and looking at our other projects? Are you including the street, infrastructure, plant improvements, water treatment, sewage treatment, and all of those, working them into, I think you mentioned, what, a five or a 10-year plan?
Well, that would be one of the things that we'd want to discuss, is what is that planning horizon we want to look at? How long that period needs to be? But we would take the projects that the city's already identified as public improvements and then the scopes and the dollars associated with that, and one, look at the priority that the public puts on each of those projects. How do those fit in? How does that fit into a funding scheme? How could that potentially be scheduled? Which thing could come first? And be able to really kind of detail that out to ideally give you a roadmap moving forward.
So you won't be looking at our water treatment plant or our streets?
No.
You'll take the numbers we've already created, the plans we've already created, and incorporate them into your plan?
Yes, that's correct.
Gotcha.
We don't need to regurgitate that information.
Right, thank you.
I think it's a great opportunity for us, you know, I'm not exactly cranked about...
60 grand.
60 grand, or 61,200, whatever the number ends up being, but I am thinking that we're going to have to do it sooner or later.
Well, we got to get the information that's usable and sometime, you know, you look at the breakdown of what the $60,000 was. It was 16,000 to analyze two facilities. And you look at what needs to be done in each facility if you're looking at identifying the issues in the existing City Hall and Building D, particularly when you look at mechanical, electrical systems to analyze, that's pretty time-consuming. So, you know, 16,000 for two facilities, 8,000 a building for MEP investigation, that's pretty cheap.
Thank you, Commissioner.
But don't raise your, don't...
Wow.
I'm not saying it's cheap that you can raise it, okay?
Yes, sir.
And then you look at programming and concept design at 28,200. And now if you're looking at developing an architectural program, meeting and determining space requirements and options there, you know, that's not cheap, but it's reasonable. And then you look at public engagement of 15,800, and that's one, it's kind of like the contract administration phase. You hope it's there, but you know it's not because of the time involved to prepare, the time to come to meetings, the time to engage. So, you know, the components of themselves, I think, are reasonable. And the additional $1,200 to expand, like you're saying, Fred, for a strategic plan...
Well, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, the sanitation building. Okay? I mean, we need to look at roads, sewers, waters, you know, water treatment plant, we need to look at all of that too, but we also ought to just take this and use it to look at other city facilities in terms of buildings, sanitation, public works.
For maintenance conditions or future, how long is it going to be?
How long, they go on, what's the lifecycle, what's left? What are our opportunities there? If we do something, can we do some combining facilities to save on, you know, to get the efficiencies that go with it? I see there being opportunities galore here that we can take advantage of and move forward.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's possible, Commissioner, that we can, through this process, be able to look at those buildings and incorporate some of that information, not just in an extremely detailed amount, but be able to say, you know, if we needed to renovate the public works building, here's roughly what that cost would be and what that could potentially include.
Yeah.
So within the scope that we've outlined, we could be able to acknowledge that.
It would be in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Pitts?
So we'd start this right after the first of the year, I'm assuming?
Yes, I would, yeah. I would wait to, yeah, middle of January and then be able to kick this off.
February, get a time, get somewhat organized, and then maybe kick it off in full swing, so to speak, by February, maybe, maybe the middle of January.
Yeah.
Community involved as quickly as we can so they understand what we're doing, what the purpose is. And then, and then again, for us, then we need to listen. If they make a recommendation to us, then we need to listen to what they say and trust them, because I've been through this with them and I think it works.
Anything else? Brett?
No, I'm good.
All right, we're just about out of time. Thank you so much for coming, Mr. Pitts.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
We will be back with you hopefully very soon.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Yeah. So I move that we close this special meeting?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we will open our next meeting at 5:30. Five minutes.
That's good.
We will call this meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for being here tonight, everyone. Got a packed agenda. The first item listed there is appointments. We have openings on the Planning Commission slash Board of Zoning Appeals and the Historic Preservation and Resource Commission. Applications are due, both those, by December 15th. Would love to see you express your interest, if you are interested. Next is the consent agenda. Gentlemen, anything you'd like to pull off of there to discuss?
I'm good.
No, I don't, I don't have anything.
All right. Then I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, 3-0, Jen? Okay, and now the next thing is some public hearings. We have five different public hearings. Thank you. Number one on the list is 519 North Sixth, so I hereby open the public hearing for 519 North Sixth. Public hearing, just to remind you, anyone from the public is welcome to stand up and express their opinions on this house only, whether this house should be condemned or not. Don, we'll start off with your thoughts on this one?
Yeah, we've sent out a letter to the owner, had no response. We understand that the owner is deceased, and this has been vacant for several years, according to several people that I've talked to in the neighborhood. We feel it should be condemned and give them an opportunity, or whoever may, to rehabilitate it. If not, we proceed to take it down, but we would like to consider it dangerous and unsafe.
So you're thinking in terms of hurrying the process?
Yes.
Okay.
We are.
You think it's, you think it's that?
He asked me as an emergency.
No, not for an emergency removal, no.
Yeah.
No.
Just to do the...
Just to go through the normal process, but we have not had any response, so I don't, to date, so I'm not sure that we will get any response, but we will, we will look to see if there is an interest from somebody that might have...
So the owner of record has died, is that what you said?
That's what we've been told.
And so we don't know about heirs or...
No, we don't at this point.
All right. It's a pretty good-sized house.
Yes, it is.
All right. Leonard, any thoughts on this one?
Now, has the title search been done to see if any, it's in a trust or if it's been put to an estate?
No, we'll need to, we'll need to follow up on that.
Well, we have the titled documents back for the resolutions that are prepared. Unfortunately, it's still titled in the name of the deceased. That's, and I know that we, I don't know that this was the property, but we had a gentleman here for some properties that he didn't know how to get them in his name for deceased, if you remember that a couple of meetings ago. So as far as this one is legally on the county records, it's still in the name of the deceased.
All right. So this is a public hearing? Anyone here in the meeting interested in standing up and offering their thoughts on this property? All right. Seeing no commenters, we will then close the public hearing. And gentlemen, you want to take action on this one?
I'd move that we proceed with the condemnation process for 519 North Sixth.
All right, I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, 3-0 on that one, Jen? Okay, next we will open the public hearing on 832 South 18th Street. Don?
Yes, we have heard from the owner of this property. They, once he found out about the public hearing, did send out a crew to clean up around the outside, to remove trees, bushes and debris. Has it, looking pretty, pretty nice outside, ready for winter. He will be in Washington DC for probably three to four months, tending to some legal matters out there. And then when he comes back, plans to start to rehabilitate one of the buildings there first, the two-story building that is farther east of this building here. The back building, and then move towards this one. And I have no reason to think that he won't rehabilitate those buildings, to continue to rehabilitate both of the buildings as time and resources allow. So we're optimistic that this will have a... So we're optimistic that this will have a, a great outcome.
It's a very solid looking house. When I walked around it, I hardly saw a crack.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems very well-built, at least.
Yes.
I, I don't believe it's been lived in in decades, maybe.
Right. I'm not sure on how long it's been, but it's been a while. But he certainly has the intent to come and live here when he's done with his business in Washington DC, rehabilitate it and start living in that, that one building, and then when he's done with that one, work in this one.
So he's willing to work with you on a timeline to?
Yeah, oh, very, very, we've talked several times on the phone. He's very, a very dutiful owner, and, and I think we'll have a good outcome.
So let me just make sure, and you're recommending that we not?
Not at this point.
Condemn this one at this point?
Not at this point.
All right.
I'd agree. You know, the, like you said, the building is solid. I didn't notice any significant deterioration that could cause a problem with life and safety in the neighborhood. And, you know, if he has already responded, once he got your, your notice and you made contact, I think that says a lot that, you know.
Well, once he, once he received the letter, he called me immediately and, and let me know his plan to have somebody out there to, to take care of the growth and everything around the house. So he's been very responsive.
Great. Okay, again, this is a public hearing. If anyone in the meeting would like to comment on this house. All right, any other comments, gentlemen?
I'm good.
All right, we will close the public hearing on 832 South 18th Street, and I'm hearing that we will take no action on that at this time.
I agree.
Okay, all right, great. We will now open the public hearing on 1005 West Pine Street. Don?
This house, I've had the opportunity to be inside with the owner. Walls are starting to come in. He had, at one point, thought that he might be able to do some work there, but I did talk to him two days ago, and he said that he wants to take this property down himself.
Okay.
And feels that he's not gonna be able to, to do what he needs to do to rehabilitate it all the way. So I would recommend that we consider this dangerous and unsafe.
Is the owner present by chance?
I'm not sure if he's here tonight or not. I don't see him.
Okay. Gentlemen, any thoughts on this one?
No, I think proceed with con, condemnation.
Okay. Again, public hearing, if anyone would like to step up and comment on this piece of property? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing on 1,000 West Pine Street. And?
1,005.
1,005, sorry, thank you, Jen. 1,005 West Pine Street. All right, would anybody like to make the motion on that one?
I'd make the motion that we adopt a resolution condemning 1,005 West Pine Street as dangerous and unsafe.
I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, three oh on that one? All right, next we'll open a public hearing on 1300 West Locust Street. Don?
We've talked about this one before we, the first hearing. Gentleman was here, that I think it was his mother's property, he was trying to see what he could do to have it put in his name. He did not stay after I got done with my presentation for me to get his information. I have not heard from him since, and just went around the property the other day. It's just getting worse. Now there's, I think one of the, some windows are broken, and I would recommend that we consider this dangerous and unsafe.
All right. Fred, anything?
No.
Leonard?
No. Are they, I guess, since the next item is for the same location, are the buildings identified as different?
Yes.
Pieces of property?
Yes, they are.
By deed or?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Same owner, but.
All right, go ahead.
So in our, our motion, how do we know, oh, I guess it's 1304 is the other one?
Yes, yeah, one's 1300 and one's 1304.
My glasses didn't focus on the, I had them both as 1300.
All right, again, it's a public hearing. Anyone else in the meeting have any comments they'd like to offer on this property? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing on 1300 West Locust.
I make a motion that we would proceed with condemnation of 1300 West Locust and declare it a dangerous and unsafe structure.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, three oh on that one? Okay, we will now open the public hearing for 1304 West Locust Street.
Yeah, this, this property is open. Not good inside, not good outside. When the gentleman was here last time, I even, even think, he said at the time that he was thinking that probably needs to go down. I'm like, we have not been contacted by anybody else since, and so this property, I think, is what they call an attractive nuisance for people to go inside and.
Yeah, looked like somebody had maybe salvaged some of the doors and things out of there.
Yes, so every time I go by, there's a little bit more that's missing from that property.
It's kinda getting ready to fall, isn't it?
So portion of it is in the, in the, in the back, yeah. So.
Fred, any comments on that one? Leonard?
No.
All right. Again, anyone from the public have any comments they'd like to make on 1304 West Locust Street? Going once, going twice? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing on 1304 West Locust Street. And I'll move that we take action to condemn 1304 West Locust Street as dangerous and unsafe. You have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, three oh on that one? Okay, Don, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Great progress. All right, next item for commission action, aye, is considering ordinance adjusting the solid waste rates as budgeted effective January 1st, 2017.
Yeah, this is, as we budgeted, 5% increase.
Okay.
Where are we at with the water?
We got the, we got the rate study in actually about four o'clock today. I haven't had a chance to look at it, but.
Wonderful.
But it is here. We'll be looking at tomorrow and trying to get it out to the commission tomorrow.
Okay. When we were putting this budget together, I, I know we said we'd probably need to raise rates, but I haven't seen any real justification for this. Do we have any?
Any justification?
Any analysis, has any analysis been done, or are we just?
I mean, this is just the straight 5% that was budgeted, and we went through the budget. We were going to come up short in the water sewer fund, and we were expecting to actually have to come back and revise the budget next year, once we have rates that we can use to fund those, so.
Right, but this is solid waste right now.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking water sewer too, but yeah, solid waste that we've been, we had not adjusted it for two years, and then we adjusted it last year, and then this is another 5% increase as budgeted. I'm sorry, I was thinking water sewer.
That's okay.
Understand what we're, what you're saying now. I don't know if Mike would like to address?
Would Mike like to?
We had the.
If he were here, he might.
We had the cost of the temporary building paid out of the sanitation budget, so that's, it would be in great shape if it wasn't for that.
Okay. Gentlemen, any thoughts on that?
Well, I'd like to see some justification with expenses and revenue instead of just automatically 5%. And, you know, we've done it with the last three or four years in each line item, so I, even though we've got it budgeted, I, I can't support another 5% without some documentation to, to say why it's needed or, or where.
Yeah, I would like to do a little further research on this also. I'm not, I know we budgeted it, but when we were doing the budget, we were in a hurry, and we were just putting things together fast, and we said, let's budget 5%. That doesn't mean we have to do it. I mean, we may have to do it, but.
I'd like to take an overall look at it with the water rate study with this as well, because I think it's all combined together.
Okay.
And then we can act appropriately. If, if we approve it, say, at the 19th meeting?
There's still time to get that in place, yeah.
Does that, does that give you enough time to?
Yeah.
At least to look at it and put some numbers together for us to look at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we will table any action on that till the next meeting? Okay, item J, considering ordinance adjusting the utility rates as budgeted effective January 1st, 2017, 19.
Here again, we just got the rate study in today, but I'm, looked at, it's close enough to know it's gonna be, to do what we're talking about doing, it's gonna be more than the 5%, so.
Okay.
I would recommend we go ahead and do the 5% at this time, so we do get it in the budget.
Yeah, but I hate to raise it 5% if we're gonna be raising it again in a couple meetings after we've digested the rate study.
We could wait and do that, if you'd prefer.
Yeah, I'd rather do it all at once.
Yeah, I'd like to have the information that we can look at to see what it's forecasting and, and actually what it's calling.
Yeah, I'd wanna raise it 5% and then raise it again a month later.
Right, yeah.
Three of us will be in deep trouble either way, but. All right, so we will defer that till we have a chance to look at that rate study also. We're, have you had any chance to look at it all?
I mean, I just.
Just got it?
Yeah, just got it.
But they did include the stuff that was left out the first time?
I'm satisfied they did, but I haven't really.
All right. All right, so we will defer that one till the next meeting also. Table that one. Item K, consider request from Montgomery County Public Works to extend the timeframe for a conditional use permit for a supplementary parking lot at the southwest corner of Wald Avenue and Myrtle Street. Somebody's gonna have to update me on this one.
That was one that's actually been since 2010, isn't that right, Jeff? Do you agree with that? And somebody realized it had been past the time that it needed to be re, re-looked at, and so they're asking for an extension.
I'm still not sure I understand, Mickey, I'm sorry. So this parking lot construction was supposed to be, construction was supposed to be completed within one year of February 4th, 2010?
Yes.
Okay.
That was one of the conditions in the conditional use permit.
They were extended for how long? What would be the recommendation?
Whatever the commission wants to give them, I mean.
Over six years.
Well, I would recommend something a year or less.
Have they started construction, getting close to starting construction?
I think they raised the building that was on the site. And I think if we're in agreement to giving them an extension, I think a one-year extension would be in line, and then monitor so that at the end of the year, if nothing's happened, notifying that the conditional use has expired and don't need to reapply.
I can't get with that. Yeah, I mean, I don't not wanna extend it.
All right, yeah, I wanna be great partners with the county, but we're, we've been kinda hard-nosed with some of our businesses in town about the exact same issue.
So to verify the date, a one-year extension that would expire, say, 12/31/2017, is that what you're thinking? Or one-year expiration based on the February 4th date?
Well, we need to, I think we need to set it as it's a actual document that's being used, and we can't put an indefinite date. The actual number of the date, February or, or December 8th, you know, it doesn't matter to me whichever would, would work to give ample notice and.
This was dated February 4th, but it's expired, so I don't know that.
See if that date has any significance to it.
I don't know that it, unless there is some sort of legal significance to it.
That's just the date we approved it, right?
Yeah.
You'd have them report back by December of next year.
So December 8th, 2017?
Yeah, give them 30-day notice or whatever.
Again, to avoid a precedent that it's not just sitting there, that we do take action, and, not that it, that date is etched in stone, but we'd need to have something to function with.
Is that a motion? To extend it?
Let's see, how do we wanna word that motion?
We'd have to make a motion to, to extend.
To extend the conditional use permit?
Extend or deadline setting the conditional use permit for the year from today.
Okay, so extend the deadline in the conditional use permit until 12/31/17? Close enough, Jeff?
Sure.
Okay, would you read that back?
I have a motion to extend the deadline in the conditional use permit for a supplementary parking lot at the southwest, southwest corner of Wald Avenue and Myrtle Street in the conditional use permit to December 31, 2017.
Great.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks everyone for that. Okay, item L, consider an ordinance authorizing the city to issue taxable IRBs for the purpose of purchasing, acquiring, contracting, installing and equipment, certain modifications and additions to an existing aircraft manufacturing facility, authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and authorizing the release of certain documents in connection with related taxable industrial revenue bonds, which are no longer outstanding. Hi.
Hi. I'm Kim Bell with Gilmore and Bell, City Spawn Council. In 1995, the city of Independence began an industrial revenue bond program with Cessna Aircraft Company when they first built their facility here in Independence. Since then, the city has issued 12 series of industrial revenue bonds in an amount in excess of $108 million, which represents a capital investment that Cessna has put into the city. This is a request for the 13th series of industrial revenue bonds in the amount of $420,000. It represents Cessna's capital investment this year in its facility. These, this investment, these improvements to the facility and the machinery and equipment will come off the tax rolls for 10 years, beginning in 2017. As you notice, we're also bringing some property back onto the tax rolls. With each series of bonds, there's a 10-year abatement for that piece of the investment, and then it starts to roll back onto the tax rolls. So a lot of this property, this investment is now back on the tax rolls in Independence. The ordinance before you authorizes the actual issuance of this latest series of bonds and execution of the necessary documents to issue the bonds. The bonds will be held by the Cessna Aircraft Company. They will not be offered to the public, and as always, the city has no financial liability whatsoever in connection with the payment of the debt that all rests with Cessna.
So just to be really clear on that, because a lot of people watch these meetings on television, the city's not spending a penny on this.
The city is not spending a penny on this.
And we're not liable for anything?
And you are not liable for anything whatsoever when it comes to paying these bonds. They do not impact your debt limit. They are not a general obligation of the city or the county in any way.
Right.
And they don't, couldn't farm our A bond rating?
Absolutely not. The benefit to the company is they get a sales tax exemption on items that are purchased with the proceeds of the bonds, and then they get the 10-year property tax abatement, which encourages the company to continue to invest in the city. Paul Shabel's here, working with the company, if you have any questions about what's going on here in Independence with Cessna, and if you have any legal questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
This is just for one bond?
Right.
The 2016?
Right, the 2016 A. Right, with the first set of documents that came out, had two series of bonds, and the second series represented some equipment related to the caravan aircraft, and the company decided not to do that, so we stripped those out. So this is just one series representing the investment here in, in Independence this year.
That was a 400?
420,000.
20,000.
Yes.
Fred, any questions?
I'm good.
Leonard?
No, that's all.
All right.
So we'd make a motion to, Kim, what would be?
Approve this ordinance?
An emotion to approve the ordinance would, would be sufficient, yeah.
To issue 420,000 worth of industrial revenue bonds taxable?
Taxable industrial bonds, yes.
So I'd make a motion that we approve the ordinance to issue $420,000 worth of taxable industrial revenue bonds to Cessna.
Yes.
That kinda shortens it up.
Yeah, we get a little wordy, you know?
So do we. Jen, you got that?
Yes.
Let's hear it.
I have a, I have a motion to adopt an ordinance to issue $420,000 of taxable IRBs to Cessna.
That good?
All right. So I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Thank you, Cessna.
Yeah, very much. Okay, item M, similarly, consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds, series 2016, Hugo's Industrial Supply Project, for the purpose of paying the cost of the acquisition and improvement of an existing commercial facility and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
And we were here, yeah, we were here about a month ago for the resolution of intent to issue these bonds for Hugo's Industrial Supply, Calcor, Inc., to acquire and renovate their facility on, on West Main Street. We now have all the documentation in place for that, and we're ready to actually issue the bonds. The ordinance in front of you authorizes the issuance of $800,000 worth of taxable industrial revenue bonds and execution of all of the necessary documents to accomplish that. Just like the previous issue, these are industrial revenue bonds, the city has no obligation for payment on these bonds, they do not affect your debt limit, your credit rating, you're simply acting as a conduit.
Right.
And the benefit, again, to the company is an ad valorem property tax abatement, and in this case, it's for seven years.
Good.
Yeah.
We're in no risk when the Hugo's default on these bonds.
None whatsoever.
No. My pleasure. All right, any questions?
No.
I'm good.
All right.
Nice discussion last time we talked about this.
Yeah. All righty, so, you want to take a shot at it?
I'll make a motion that we authorize an ordinance to issue taxable industrial revenue bonds for Hugo's Industrial Supply Project.
Good enough?
That's good enough.
All right, I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, three oh. Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim, appreciate you coming. Okay, on to N, consider setting a hearing date of December 19th, 2016, at 5:30 PM to revise the budget.
Yes, you should have the notice in your packets. There's just a few funds that I would like to revise. The general fund at the last, actually, I think it was maybe two meetings ago, you approved a contract with Ray Roofing to pay for the Ash Us Center roof, and how that works is the city's going to pay for it, and then we will be reimbursed by the USD and by the rec center. So that full expense had not been budgeted to come out of our general fund, so I've added that in. On the library fund, there was a small balance that rolled over from last year and didn't get paid that I need to allow budget authority to have paid that this year, which we have. And then in the sanitation fund, when we were doing the budget last year, we didn't have the numbers included for the fire and EMS, well, the Polycart program, which is $375,000. That's now being used to cover the fire and EMS building, not the full $375,000. But I have included the full amount because I believe Mike's going to be coming to you later this year requesting a truck. My understanding is there's some issues with all of our trucks requiring a CDL right now, and as far as staffing issues, if we have one of our CDL drivers call in sick, that truck's out of circulation because we're having trouble keeping people with CDL. So he's looking at a smaller truck that does not require a CDL, would be a little less expensive, but I'd like to give him room so that if you do approve that purchase, he can purchase it. And then this year, the $119,000 sanitation truck that we purchased this year had actually been budgeted last year, so now it needs to be included in the numbers for this year.
So all we're doing tonight is setting a hearing date?
You're setting a hearing, we have to give 10 days' notice, and it needs to happen before the end of the year, so if you don't set the hearing today, we're in serious trouble.
So it has to be in the paper tomorrow?
Yes, and I have actually communicated with the paper.
It has to be in the paper tomorrow.
They already have this, and they will get whatever changes you ask me to make to it, they'll get that tomorrow, but they know what space to take up in the paper.
No, okay.
The, the Daily Reporter is very accommodating with me when we have these last ten days. Thank you, Josh.
So this is our, going to be our, at our regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we move to a Monday of that week?
We did, because I think Fred's going to Hawaii?
Probably.
Yes.
All right. I don't have a problem with this.
No.
Anybody else? Leonard, you okay with having this hearing?
The 19th or the 16th?
19th.
The 19th was the Monday.
There's a typo.
Of that week.
Oh, okay.
If it's the 16th, we're late, and we will have to move it to the 19th because there has to be 10 days' notice in the paper.
In our notes, it says the 19th, and the next sentence it says the 16th.
Yeah.
Oh, it does? On the memo? Oh, I didn't read through the memo completely. It should be the 19th, that's, that's the regularly scheduled second commission meeting.
Kelly's not here, let's blame it on her.
Yeah. Well, the actual piece that'll go in the papers, correct, though, I believe.
Yeah, it looks like the note in the memo, I'm sorry, I hadn't read the note in the memo. But yeah, it's December 19th we're setting the hearing for.
So I'll move that we set a hearing date of December 19th, 2016, at 5:30 PM to revise the budget.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Jen. Move on to O, wow. Consider a resolution rescinding condemnation action for the following properties. That is quite a list.
Do we have to go through these each?
We, well, I, we have one resolution, so I'm hoping we're not going to go through them each and adopt a resolution for each of them. A lot of these properties are ones that have been taken care of in the past, probably three or four years, that have never made it on here. I think, I think you guys were aware, this, this condemnation process has been a little bit messy, so this is us going back through some of these, you were responsible for taking out, some of them were taken out before you guys, but the work was never done to assess back to the properties and to get these off the condemnation rolls. And we'd like to get them going, let the property owners have them free and clear. You've already, in the consent agenda, passed the ordinance assessing any nuisance charges back to them. So these have all been verified through the, through the building inspector or some of city staff, that the properties have either been removed, which is what the majority of these are, and I think there might be one or two that have been rehabilitated.
All right.
So as a resolution, we just need to make one motion and.
Yeah, and you can do, adopt a resolution, removing all, I think it's 17 properties.
So just approve resolution number 2016-064.
Perfect.
If that was a motion, I'll second.
All right, it was a motion. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great.
Shoo.
Wonderful. All right, item P, consider options for garden club, a roof replacement, or repair.
Yeah, this is one that we had, that we were going to replace with asphalt shingles, and it was pointed out that we had a more aesthetically pleasing roof on the facility, and so we've been in touch with the insurance company, and what they have basically told us is that if we want the, the aesthetically pleasing roof, they will find us a few used tiles that we can have put on, it'll be $1,000, and it won't cost us anything. Our alternative is to have them put an asphalt shingle roof on the facility, which they will do, and the only cost, our cost will be the, the difference between the cost of installing it, less the amount they've already paid us on that facility, minus the deductible. It will be not replaceable insurance, we have insurance that does depreciate, but it will be a new roof that they will pay for, everything but the deductible.
I'd like to see the, the shingles replaced that are broken. It's not really that hard on the, that type of roof.
To replace them?
No, no, the broken ones removed, and you nail a strap in that spot and then bend the strap up. Usually it's copper, there might even be some shingles in the garage across the street. That, that type of shingle is on the garage, and they were stored in the, in the garage when they were removed, and repairs have been done on the house in that manner, too.
Well, the insurance company said they would find us the shingles if we went that route.
That'd be better.
Yeah, they'll find them.
Is that, is that the best long-term solution?
I wouldn't recommend it, I'd put a new asphalt shingle roof on it, that'd be my recommendation.
We, we go to great expense to take asbestos out of homes that we're demolishing. I, I'm having a little trouble understanding why we'd want to leave asbestos on the roof of this building, is it?
It's cement asbestos, it's the same as the shingles on siding of the houses in the 50s all over town. It's really not a friable material.
Doesn't require any special handling when you have breakage or?
Just got to be careful, you know, it's.
Well, it's non-fireable until it's crushed ground or.
Right, it's non-friable.
But why wouldn't we take the new roof? I mean, if they're willing to essentially buy us a new roof.
The shingles won't last as long as that roof will.
The asphalt shingles?
Right.
The insurance company, will they insure that? Other roof?
Well, we'll have the same.
How, he got broke because of?
Of storm. Yeah, storm. I guess we would have the same insurance that we had on it previous. I mean, if something happened again, they'd probably replace the shingles again.
Because the insurance policy would be replacement cost. Is that what our policy says? Or is it?
It, it's, it's not replacement cost, it's the mark, whatever the market value is, with depreciation included. But if we had another storm, they'd probably replace some more if something happened to them.
Sean, I'd love to ask your opinion on this, if you don't mind. I'm assuming that's why you're here? In case we have questions for you.
To ask, good time, I'm glad I walked in at the right time, I guess.
So your take on these four different options?
I'm not really sold on the DaVinci or that Sienna shingle. With the extra cost, we'd have to go into doing it, I don't really see the, the merit for it.
DaVinci is that company in Kansas City, right?
What?
DaVinci is in Kansas City?
I don't even really know.
They are.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's effectively a plastic shingle.
Yeah, I've toured their plant, it's amazing product, but it's gosh awful expensive.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I don't think it's really, you know, I know we put it on two other structures that had a similar style shingle on it because of the warranty, excuse me, but I, you know, the size of this roof, I just don't see merits that expenditure, you know, to go on, on a roof of this size.
Okay, I'm with you. And the Sienna?
The Sienna actually closely matches what the existing roof is, and if you were going for aesthetics, but it's not going to match the warranty aspect of it and the, you know, the durability, I mean, an asphalt shingle is an asphalt shingle. But, you know, the size of that roof would be, you know, over time, it's going to be fairly inexpensive, especially if you have a number of other roofs that need to be replaced at the same time, you can do, you know, quantity, go for a quantity roofing, roofing replacement. So, I mean, you're, you're looking at, you know, 20-year probably, 15, 20 years on a roof like that, so most likely, we're going to have another hailstorm. We live in Kansas, so that's a strong possibility. To be honest with you, there was not that many tiles that were damaged on that roof. There's no way to really truly say that it was the hailstorm, but it was, the insurance company's basically kind of throwing us a bone to replace that roof, so.
Okay.
I mean, I, the, I, like I've said before, I'd recommend going the asphalt shingle route, but if you guys opted to do the, just replace the tiles, that, that would be your decision, but I'd, I'd recommend using.
For the cost, it's not, how many square are we talking about here? We're talking about?
It's under 10, yeah, I think it's under 10, so somewhere in that, so it's, it's, it's not a very big roof. So we just, they're, they're effectively applying this brand-new roof on this. There was no way for him to truly say how many, that it was done by, it was done by hail, that, that roof's fairly protected by, by the trees around it right there, so. It was kind of a judgment call, and I was standing out there with the adjuster, and I was like, come on, man, it's an as, it's an asbestos tile roof, so.
I think that asphalt shingle is a good-looking roof, I mean, they're all good-looking roofs, but.
Yeah.
If, if the existing asbestos, when repaired, is a longer-life roof, then I, I guess I can't see taking it off, and that way we maintain the historic significance.
And whatever.
Do you agree it's going to be a long-life roof with the asbestos?
I can't guarantee you anything on, on the roof, you know, I mean, I don't know how long those tiles have been damaged, if, if it was damaged by the hailstorm, I can't say for sure.
Do we know how long it's been up there?
I don't have a clue, I haven't, I haven't even asked anybody how long I think it's been up there, but it's.
Since it was built.
When was that?
It's original?
Yeah.
When was that, do we know?
It lasted well, then?
Yeah, probably, yeah, 60, 70 years, somebody's probably said in the audience, so I wouldn't doubt that at all.
How many?
60 or 80 years.
Wow.
Do I hear higher?
Do I hear nine?
Do we hear nine? Who wants to buy it right now?
Well.
They supposedly had a lifetime warranty on them, but.
Yeah, I mean, one of the best long-term solutions is, to be honest, I don't know.
I don't know what the best, I don't, I mean, I'm just, yes, for my opinion, I, I told you I thought the asphalt would be the way to go.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, and when I walked in, I thought it was a no-brainer, the asphalt was the way, because we get a new roof.
Yeah.
But if the original one, the asbestos tiles, have a longer life expectancy than the asphalt, I guess I can't see changing them out.
Especially if we have another storm, they crack, I'm going to replace them.
The issue there is your issue, is, you know, that's, my only concern is if we would just replace them, how long are we going to have, you know? Are we going to guarantee we're going to have another source of those tile, we're going to have to be replacing it? That, that asphalt tile roof, you know, at the next one, completely replace it.
But if it's been on there 80 years?
I mean, yeah.
Pretty stout roof.
Had a lot of storms in 80 years.
I would say. Okay, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this?
Yeah, I would, I'd say replace the broken ones and keep the existing roof.
Fred?
Okay with that.
All right. Do we need a motion?
So was that a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I make a motion that we do not remove the current roof, but just replace the damaged tile.
All right, I go to, I'll talk to H and H tomorrow about doing that.
Second, I'd second that motion, man.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Sean, appreciate your help. Okay.
We had an addition that released that mortgage.
Yeah, Q, you see it? Consider releasing a mortgage for the property located at 901 East Birch. Any discussion on this? City attorney wrote this?
That was a three-year mortgage to make sure the owner didn't flip the house after receiving a grant. The three years has been over three, four years ago, so.
Wow, okay.
This, this needs to be.
So this is a no-brainer?
Yes.
Any?
No, I'm good.
Any discussion?
No.
All right.
I'd make a motion, we release the mortgage for the property located at 901 East Birch.
I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item R, consider extending the downtown grant program deadline till January 13th. April, you got anything you want to say on this one? You got to come to the microphone if you're going to talk. I'll never hear the end of it, people will stop me on the street and say, why didn't you?
Um, yes, we've had quite a bit of interest in the grant, and the challenge that they're having is kind of getting with contractors and getting quotes in a timely manner, so we're asking to give till January 13th. Actually had three contacts today, so it's going well.
Looks like we're going to have a lot of applicants, then.
We'll see, you know, part of that is contacts and see if they follow through, but part of their issue is asking for various disciplines, contacts, and that kind, type of thing, so good interest, good interest. And they've all been very appreciative of the city's efforts.
And you think we'll be able to get them all in by January 13?
I'm hoping, that's, those who have contacted me, I told them that I was coming to the commission and going to ask for an extension, but they needed to, with the holidays and all, it was understandable, but they needed to get moving, and if we could help facilitate that in any way, we would do so.
So they're all good with the 13th date, then, basically?
They're hoping.
You know, and if we come up against something, we can always come back, but, yeah, I'm hoping that that will work.
Okay.
Okay.
Leonard, any questions?
No.
All right?
I'm good with it.
Do we want to motion, or just, we tell you we're fine with it?
If you're fine with it, I think we're good. If you're fine with it, I think we're good. If, we can put it in the program. We're going to, we will send another letter out to all the property owners, letting them know. And of course, we'll be reliant on the paper to get some information out as well.
Of course. Steve?
He, he was listening, I know he was.
Okay, great. Thanks, April. Appreciate that.
Do we need a motion or is this just more information for us?
We never made a motion to approve the reg, the original date. I don't know that we need one.
Yeah.
Okay, item S, sales tax report.
Um, I will point out that Commissioner Kuplish brought to my attention on 2016, the average per month. I should have changed that divisor from nine to 10 because it looks really optimistic considering what we've gotten in. So, that number should actually be 162,327.
Okay, darn.
However, I'm hoping recent water sales may push that up.
All those pent-up showers.
All those people that ran to Walmart and bought their bottled water.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Forced to see, actually, uh, an increase in sales tax for Christmas. That'll be in the January or February.
Yeah, usually you can see that in the February numbers. If you look across, they're, they're a little bit higher.
Yes, they are. Okay. Any other questions? All right. On to T, update on city projects. Mickey?
Yeah, I did just now on our projects. The Maine and Peter Pan intersection, that is now scheduled for bidding in March of next year. They are acquiring right away, right now, and also they've got utility relocations in progress. Uh, the construction is scheduled for June of next year. Lakeside list station is, uh, has been approved by KDHE. It's ready to go. And Basin Five, the Basin Five CDBG is completed. Also, the Eighth and Parkhurst, that, that line under the railroad is completed. Also, the Phase Three of the ADA project is completed. Uh, the airport, uh, taxiways, uh, is, should be completed within the next week, but they shut down with the really cold weather with the concrete. But they're fairly confident they'll be through by the end of the year. So, that project will be over. And staff had a review of the, of the water emergency. Went over the, uh, SWOT analysis. The strengths were, of course, our core department heads and supervisors that really worked together very harmoniously. And everyone knew their role and, and completed it. We've had, uh, several officials comment on how everyone in Independence knew exactly what to do and knew where they were going and, and worked together tremendously, all of the employees. I think you, we can't say it enough, how they all worked together. Also, we did a, a fairly good job on getting the information out with social media, print. Probably were a little weak on the radio portion. We did have some, uh, interviews on the radio, but it was, it certainly could be improved. We certainly had a good working relationship with local county and state and federal officials, the governor's office. We had a, a commission, all three of you, that were actually volunteered and helped. And we had some tremendous volunteers. We had so many volunteers, we really couldn't use them all because we had the work assigned to employees. If we'd have known we were going to have that many, we could have probably done with, with fewer employees. But as far as opportunities, uh, our communication could certainly have been better. Even though we were fairly good on social media, uh, we could take more actions to do it more aggressively. And also with, uh, call, phone chains and things like that, that we really didn't use as effectively as we could. Uh, also, uh, at 1:00, when we, that morning, on Friday morning, when we got the, uh, the word that it was all clear, uh, we began to call the businesses. And unfortunately, some of the businesses that changed managers or owners, uh, we weren't able to contact. So, an updated, uh, emergency call list would be good to develop. And right now, would be a good time to do it when everybody realizes that it is important.
Right.
And, uh, other weaknesses were to reach the shut-ins that are not connected to social media. We did our best to make contacts and, uh, a lot of the, uh, a lot of us knew, uh, different people and, and ones that we could call that knew some. But we could certainly do a better job on developing a list for those emergency situations. And again, it would be a good time to do it now when it's fresh on everybody's mind that it is important to, uh, let us have that information. We also talked about developing forms that we could use in emergencies so that we wouldn't, uh, forget things like that. As far as threats, uh, equipment not running, and we did run out of some supplies that could have been, uh, available had we planned for it. We also had some phone jacks and, uh, communication availability that we could improve on. Also, there was some issues with, uh, having the correct information when you've got, uh, when you're trying to control the information going out. There's always, uh, situations that you end up, uh, saying one thing and it's not accurate. We called all the businesses or tried to call them all Thursday night to tell them they wouldn't have water Friday because we didn't expect to get it for Friday. And then at 1:00, when they called, we had to call them back and tell them that, that we in fact would have water and they could, uh, run their business. I remember calling, uh, the donut shop owner and I think he would have been asleep, but he was happy to get that call at 3:00. But I think he would have preferred to have it at 2:00 if we could have got them all called quicker. So, that was some of the weaknesses. But I would say that, uh, some of the officials that were here and other places did, uh, comment that our, uh, personnel worked together as well as they had seen it in any place, even comparatively to, uh, some of the larger cities. We'll go unnamed, but, uh, I was very proud of all of them. And, uh, there wasn't any, I couldn't detect any, uh, uh, body being frustrated or upset because they had to work through Thanksgiving. Uh, that's a real bad holiday to be committed because people have family things. And we certainly appreciate all of the, the employees for doing what they did. And I'm sure the, the citizens approve, uh, appreciate it. But we especially appreciate all of the volunteers that, that worked right beside us during that time.
Yeah, I thought it was really well-handled. And I also received compliments from the observers from the state that were there, saying what a good job our team did. Also, on Friday morning, I was hoping to eat lunch at Big Cheese Friday, so I called, you know, I, I texted last early Friday morning and said, hey, water's on, Casey. And he was like, yeah, you're like the fifth city person to contact me, so. I know that we, we definitely did a good job of getting in touch with everybody to let them know that it was available again, which I appreciate it.
It was amazing, the cooperation, you know, like you mentioned, the city employees giving up their, their holiday and, and, and the attitude that I saw and the cooperation with the, the public too, to honor our request. And then when I worked distributing water, them coming through, uh, offering to help, bringing things. You know, it, it was definitely, uh, uh, a shining spot in a very tragic situation, both for Niota Shea, but also the potential for what we were going through. And to see the cooperation that avoided that boil order and, and it's, it's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, like, like Leonard was saying, it was amazing the number of people that would volunteer to, uh, you know, who do I call? Who do I contact? I'd love to help. There's a guy, Jen and I were out there and there was a guy that came up there with this little red wagon a couple times. And he couldn't take very much, but he had his little list about where he was going with, with bottled water. That was.
To help shut-ins.
Yeah, that was really.
That was great.
That was really rewarding. I'm happy to see you go through this evaluation process, Mickey. I think this is real important because there are lessons learned. What were they? I think you detailed it. One question I would have is, is now that you know where the opportunities for improvement are, what's going to be the implementation process? How will?
We, we're following up and, and, and making improvements in those areas that we have lost opportunities.
Okay, can you review that with us after you?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be nice to know and.
Give us, uh, uh, maybe 30 days.
Well, that's fine.
Maybe the next meeting, possibly 30 days.
Hope we don't need it tomorrow. But, um, yeah. That, I'm good with that. I do think it's good to publicize what improvements the staff has commit, you know, has, has looked at so that we, uh, we know next time we go through this, we'll be even better prepared. But there will also be lessons learned from that too. So, I think it's a good, good evaluation process.
There's certainly opportunities to get people's, uh, information now that there won't be later when they forget about the water emergency.
Absolutely. I know a lot of the doors I knocked on, it really helped to be face-to-face with them, you know, to say, we really, really need you to, you know, stop using water now. And most everybody I talked to said they would, and clearly, most people did.
Thanksgiving night, uh, at the water treatment plant, they couldn't detect any usage. I'm sure there was some, but it was not detectable.
And from what I know, most everybody that we called or contacted to help, help. Not too many people weren't.
I do have a question for Dave, actually. So, this, this explosion makes me wonder how well we know what's in our different industrial facilities in case of a fire. Do we? Do we have a list of what they have on site?
Actually, to tell you, Mayor, we have just started a process. I started it in November after Rusty left. I signed the shifts. We are in the current, pre-planning every building in town. Uh, I wanted to start with our schools first because those have a high number of value to us for our kids. We're going through each building. As soon as we get the schools done, we'll be in the downtown, uh, pre-planning. We're not there to, we just want to know what's in there.
Right.
And we'll hit all the industries. We're pre-planned fire planning them and we all know everything. We're putting them in books. Uh, we're also going to put them on our computers so we have access when we go to these fires. We know exactly what's there and what we need.
It never hit me until I saw this, how important it is to know what you're dealing with.
Yeah. And companies are required to submit that to us, uh, in a book form every year of what they have. And we do have that on fire. But I want our firefighters to know. And it's one thing, like you said, when you go and see, when we pull up on a fire, we know where that is at and how to handle it.
That's invaluable, I think.
Yes, very.
I get the two schools mixed up. Eisenhower is the newest one.
Jefferson.
Jefferson. Has there a plan been developed or looked at because of the high-pressure product petroleum lines that run behind the school? A special evacuation plan for the school and an incident of how that would be handled?
We actually, Leonard, uh, Monday, I'm meeting with the three captains and I'm sure Mickey will be there. They have pre-planned that and we'll see if they caught that in their pre-plan. And if not, I'll make sure that it is addressed.
And maybe with the school too, I don't know.
Right.
If the school's addressed.
Jen will get with Rusty, but.
That too.
I'll make sure that is, that's a good point. I mean, because a lot of people don't realize that does run right under there, goes right over to the golf course.
Well, there's also the possibility for, because of the Union Civic Railroad line, and they, they have a lot of chemicals and hazardous materials that are on that line. You know, there's, this been what, six weeks ago, there was that chemical, um, issue at Atchison. And, uh, that cloud, it mixed together and formed a cloud and it was right over their school.
Yeah.
Which was, uh, so how do you respond? What's the appropriate response?
Yeah.
You know, and if the wind was blowing right, that'd be on.
Yeah, our, we had our safety meeting Tuesday and our work comp carrier covers Atchison. And they had, what she tells me, sixty claims filed of, by the employees because of that exposure in Atchison. They got into the, uh, exposure.
Yeah.
It's a big claim for them.
Yeah, huge.
Anything else on the water situation explosion? Mickey, a couple of things I didn't see on your list. One of them is our downtown, um, project where we penetrated our water main. I don't see that on your list of projects.
Oh, uh, and that is, should be up for, for bidding. No, I think on that, we decided that we'd wait till spring to do that.
I just knew we'd talk about waiting until after any wall, but I wasn't sure after that.
We could do it. Now, actually, we was going to, uh, he was going to get quotes, engineer was going to get quotes and see which one was cheapest. Do it now or, or later. And I'll check on that.
Okay.
Had you brought that up.
That'd be great.
So, the Maine and Peter Pan intersection, is that going to be concrete or is that going to be asphalt?
It's, uh, primarily, uh, concrete.
Is it?
Predominantly concrete.
I was also going to ask about the water line out there to the new Labette Health Center.
Oh.
That we partnered, partnered with them on that.
And Terry's working on it. He's working on it. He's had a lot of, uh, rock and it's gone much slower than he had expected. And he, here he is. He's actually going to get them water service, uh, on that time schedule, but not the, the full pressure because it's going to be a loop line. I'll let him.
We're approximately 80% complete right now.
Great.
Thing I'm waiting on right now is contractor do the boring under the road. That's, we're only hold up at this point.
Under Peter Pan?
Under Peter Pan, getting that in so we can get the water turned on.
Fantastic. I see they're moving right along.
Yeah, we're doing pretty good.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Terry. That's the only questions I have. Anybody else on any projects needing an update? Okay, thank you, Mickey.
I'd like to also say that, uh, we are accepting resumes for fire chief at this time. I think we're closing that December 31st.
Great.
So. December 30th.
Okay, Commission comments is next. Nothing from Fred? Anything from Leonard?
Questions I asked for, or the comments I had were questions that I asked. I was glad to see the update on the review of the crisis.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
The planning part of that.
Leonard?
Now, had a lot of people have, have commented that they appreciate the packet being posted on the website when the agenda is. And, uh, that's really been a, a big point to give the information out ahead of time. And just, you know, they're always, uh, asking, when's, if they see the meeting coming up, when's it going to be posted? So, getting it posted early and, and being available to the public is really, as well as the, the videoing of the meetings. It's amazing how many people have, have commented about those two features being appreciative that now they, they can watch. And, uh, I wasn't for sure. One of the comments was, yeah, I see you late at night, you know, 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning and I can't sleep. And I'm not for sure. They never go on and say that that puts them to sleep?
To sleep, yeah. I would think that'd be a sure cure.
Yeah, I take it as a compliment. Now, if, if we can continue to get our packet posted with the agenda, that'll really be nice.
Yeah, that's wonderful. What else?
That's it?
All right. Next, public concerns, I only have one. Vic Wyble. Welcome, Vic.
My comments are on the communications process that, uh, occurred during the emergency. And I think this is great. I have nothing to say bad about how the council did it, how it was handled by the people in Independence. But communications within, with the outage was really, my opinion, pretty pathetic. Could have been done better. And I, that's what I heard from the SWOT analysis. What I don't understand though is why anytime something happens, you guys take the, not you guys, but the city manager, city government, whatever you want to call it, uh, take the ivory tower approach. That, like, citizens don't have any input in this. There's things that I saw as a citizen that I don't understand why it didn't occur. Like Cable One has an emergency alert system. Could have broken in at any time and announced to all the people on Cable One that, hey, there's a problem. to all the people on Cable One, that, "Hey, there's a problem." For I don't know how many years, there's been auto dialers that automatically make calls. I, probably the city doesn't have one, I don't know, but I'm sure if they would've called AT&T, or one of the utilities, they would've set up access forum, some form or another, where those calls could've been made, and the message would've gotten out a whole lot faster. The city alert system, I, I signed up at, you know, at the website, so that I'd get messages from the city, and boy, did I get messages, it'd have to be, God knows how long, this message came out and said, "Don't use any water, don't use any water." Well, that's great, they never did tell me where I could go and find out what was going on, like the burn band. I don't know, my brother told me about that, because he's a barbecue, that's why I'm not a- But yet, at the end, no, nothing ever came out and said, "Oh, by the way, the emergency's over." I mean, there's a lot of things that your SWAT analysis, at least maybe in the detail you showed, didn't bring out, that a public hearing might actually turn you on to some better ways to do things, and I think you guys should consider that. I mean, people have a lot of input that could help. I mean, actually, after all, we went through the problem, too.
Sure.
It wasn't just the city officials, though. Like I said, you guys did a fantastic job. I mean, I applied everybody that got out and worked and, and did everything, and the people who walked door to door, because that's the way it was done, and I think it was great, you know? We got it out, the people in town responded like they should've, it was great. But, anyway, I just think you should have a public hearing, and let people come forth and discuss problems that they encountered during the outage, or emergency rather, from their side. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Always room for improvement, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vic. Okay, no other public concerns, so executive session. I would like to call for an executive session for twenty minutes, to discuss non-elected personnel with the three commissioners. I got six thirty-seven.
I'd make a motion, we go into executive session for twenty minutes, for non-elected personnel.
I'll second.
Director Privacy on.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, we're back in session, and move we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, we are adjourned.